They're trying to work their way through.
No.
Time is now seven thirty. The executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Robert Merrill, Angela Adams, Lamontick Gavna, Sarah Corris, Gerald Badino, Mayor Fordham, Frank Roberts, Bern Thorn, and Kim Corris. That came to us.
And the interim chairman.
And Jerry McDaniel. For the record, if any person or participant in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter not included in the motion they're going to executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session is violation of the open meeting law, I would ask that you stay here concerned for the record. Seeing that, the next agenda item is Karen Arrowood, Friends of Aguilar.
I'm Karen.
Hi Karen.
I'm speaking to you on behalf of Karen. She's not feeling well tonight, so she asked me to help her out. So, name is Donna Rodriguez, and I'm a member of the Friends of Aguilar, first year. And first thing I'd like to do is thank the board, the town board, for your past work with the Aguilar Day, your future work, and hopefully we can get you to help us out this year. And I also want to thank Joe for the work that he's done at the park. We have open bathrooms. We're getting a very ugly tree gone. And we're getting some work done on tables and the water fountains. So that is a big plus, because when people come here, they're going to see fixed things, and they're going to know that we do have pride in our community. First thing Karen wanted me to tell you is that everything is going great. We've got a lot of things lined up. Of course, there's going to be stuff happening that day of, but we're not worried about it. We think that everything is going to be taken care of. We're getting more and more people every day saying, hey, I want to help, or can you use some help? And that's exactly what we need right now. The part that I'm going to ask of you is through an email I got from Sergeant Grugel of the Fort Carson Marching Band. They are going to be our parade participants for the first year. And they asked us if we would invite the town council, the town officials, to stand in front of this building as the band goes marching by, so they can salute you. And I thought that was a big honor just to be asked to do that for a military group. So, that's our request, is that if you have time that morning, the parade starts at ten o'clock. And depending on how big it is, they may come by here ten twenty, and if you want to just stand out there and let these people salute you, that would be fantastic. Okay. There's still plenty to do, and I invite everyone, not only of the board, but I invite everyone in the community to help. This is your day as much as it is anyone's. This is our town showing that we have pride in it, that we think that there is a good reason to have an Aguilar festival. So I invite you all to help any way you can.
So the nasty rumor that's going around that it's not going to happen is just
That is a bunk.
Okay.
No rumor. It is happening, and if it wasn't happening, we're going to hold it anyway.
Okay.
It's going to happen. Let's see. We want to put the best Aguilar Day festival ever. We need help the day of to make sure that everything runs as smoothly as possible. And finally, I would like to challenge everybody to participate in the parade. Put your car in. Write something cool on the side of it. Let your kids hang out the windows, or, you know, do balloons. But we, we need a big parade, just to show everybody that, yeah, we, we matter.
If it helps any, I do have some information from the fire department.
Wonderful.
There's going to be several things, and we're also going to be, because we can't throw stuff, we're going to be handing autographs and bracelets to the kids, so we're going to have people walking and and jogging, so we'll have both to help.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I appreciate what all of you are doing. Yes, sir.
Did someone go out and request to let people know not to bring dogs into the park that day?
Karen would know about that, but if she doesn't, I will tell her.
Somebody had mentioned that.
Right, I, I know what you're talking about, and I'll express that to her. We have a meeting on Saturday at two o'clock at the community center, if anyone wants to come and see what we're doing. If they want to say, hey, I want to help, that would be the way to do it, so you can know what you're doing. But yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Bob.
Won't control all the loose dogs, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Other people.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
One, did they need help with the tree? The fire department, I didn't know. Oh, the fire department said if you guys need help with getting the tree down, because we have actual loggers, we have all the equipment and the chops and everything, if you need help getting the tree down, we thought, if you need help, let us know, we'll come, chop it all up, so that residents who need wood for winter can come take it one more dump.
Well, I know we are getting that Christmas tree out Monday. So that's a big gate, because it's ugly.
Okay, so you don't, you guys don't need the help then?
No, I don't know.
There's a little Christmas tree.
That's a little Christmas. Yeah, we're talking about the widow makers and stuff, so.
Did they want them by the library?
The big one.
Yeah, talk to Joe about it.
I haven't, I know anything about it. So, any help would be welcome.
I know she was concerned, she was very concerned about the branches falling and things like that, so we thought, you know, that, that might be something we could help with.
That'd be wonderful.
Any help would be welcome.
All right, I'll get with you after meeting, then if you can, and we'll find out what's, what's best time for you, because we have some flexibility with ours to someone.
Stephanie, you had a question? I just wanted to let the board know that Karen did come in last week and was asking if anybody had ever approved her fifty dollar donation, and she was going to bring it up tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. She asked me to bring that up and ask you for a fifty dollar donation towards this project, but we talked about a little bit, and that said, I think this town needs every penny it has right now, and so we don't need your donation of money. We just need you to approve of what we're doing and help out, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's working on the map now. Oh, she should have something by Saturday.
Shelby?
Yes, sir. I mean, good evening, I mean, you all know I'm Shelby, I'm sorry I'm loud. Only had a few things that I wanted to go over. One was the, the offer of the department cutting down, since we've got, we've got everybody, everybody's got all the equipment, so might as well put them all to work and get that down. So I'll get with Joe with that, and we'll do that. The second one was the hydrant project, because that's another thing that, that takes a lot of time for utility. What can we do? Because that's the, the fire department needs nothing from town, but what we do need is to know what hydrants are working and what ones aren't, so that they are prepared. They're always prepared with their trucks, just so everybody's, so nobody's worried. Your fire department always comes with trucks ready to go, and everybody's ready to put water on, on whatever's going on, but it makes their job more difficult when they don't know what to expect with those hydrants in town, and there's a lot of problems. If we, we've got a couple different people that have, that have had that experience with testing the hydrants, would they be able to get with Joe and work with him again, again, trying to find some time where we might be able to go through the whole town, so that we have it mapped out, what's working and what's not? Or has there, is there, is there a set yet?
Uh, well, I've already got it by half a town, yeah.
Okay.
So, and I do have Mark, which ones are not working. There is only one so far.
Okay. And, yeah, and I'll get with you with that, if that's okay, and we can, whatever we can do to help facilitate that, so that it'll take some of the, the pressure off of everything else that you've got to do. Okay? Now, the last thing I had are the two people who aren't here. Behavior of specifically Tyra and Mayor. Donald shoved me in front of two cops right here in the, in the middle of the room once, didn't make a big deal about it. But the threats, the lies. You, you, everybody knows what Tyra did now concerning Ruth, my husband, and other first responders who did not do anything wrong, except say, yes, gas leaks are dangerous. So what is, what was her response? She called every captain that she could in Southern Colorado to try and get my husband fired for talking to the press about that. She lied, though. She didn't just, she wasn't just an angry, you know, someone working, trying to protect their town from bad gossip. No, this was a employee lying about how my husband responded. He is a professional. Yes, he's a volunteer, but he's a professional. He came in full gear. He came in, he went and got an engine. She lied to his bosses and said he showed up in his POV, wasn't ready, he was just wandering around. There's video from these gentlemen. There's other people in this room who saw him show up. There's people standing outside right now who saw my husband show up on scene, and the first responders. Some of the cops that are here probably heard about the same story too. There were three of them there, and they were on scene. Their body cam proved that my husband showed up as he's supposed to, as any volunteer firefighter would. Why would she lie to get him fired? And go through such lengths to get him fired? I'm not even going to talk about the threats that were made against me, because those are just ridiculous. But the next time I have someone on this board or in this office threatening to deep six me in my Totes Lake, we're going to talk, and it's going to be with lawyers, and it's going to be with cops. I'm done with this shit. This cannot continue. This is unprofessional behavior, and it's got to stop. I want to know what's going to be done about Tyra. Is there going to be a reprimand of any kind? Or are we going to have to proceed like everybody else with lawsuits every time that they do something that is illegal?
It's coming, it's on the agenda.
When? Because I heard that last month. All right. Thank you very much. That was it.
Can I add something to finish her? According to ordinance two eighty-four, whenever the mayor or the mayor pro temp hears complaints about people on the board, the mayor or the mayor pro temp, the mayor employees, the mayor or the mayor pro temp is supposed to investigate the allegations.
We'll show up.
Investigate the allegations.
And then come up with some kind of plan to either discipline them or talk them over, whatever. Do you know if any of that was done?
That's what I know.
And that's the problem, is that she keeps getting away with it, and it keeps escalating. Do you know how many other volunteers she's chased out of town? Would you like that number? Because there's been other volunteer first responders that she has done the same thing to, and they have not come back to help. We can't afford to lose people. We need volunteers in this town. We need people who care. We need to stop chasing them off.
Read this. The utility report?
Happy birthday, Joe.
Thank you. Well, as you guys know, I'm back to working by myself.
What do you mean by that?
I don't have, no more help. He quit.
What?
Yep, he quit yesterday. And I'll tell you what. Here, why don't you read it?
We wrote out later.
Did you read that? Did you agree with it? That it's more fault than me is fault. It got better there the last week or two, but that poor kid couldn't.
I thought you micro-managed your thing.
That's what I thought, too. But and I, it wasn't pointing, it's not pointing at you right now, Bern. It's not pointing at you. It's not pointing at Gerald or this out. I mean, when you got one board member that can come in.
We set up a committee trying to help the maintenance.
Right.
And it wasn't intended for micromanaging.
They had nothing to do with the committee. We didn't even know you had it.
More like helping you get schedules going. Couple of us had experience in this, and as supervisors, and you came into a job that you really weren't qualified for. There's a big difference from maintenance that you were doing for the county and what you have to have here.
Right.
And we're still paying MGM twenty thousand a month.
Oh, they're done now.
That's why I heard that a couple of months ago.
Oh, they're done now.
I heard that a couple of months ago, so.
But it, it, like I said, Bern, it had, it wasn't pointing toward you.
What tools did we not get for you that you asked for?
It's stuff on the fly. Certain things that we needed like one day, the other day, actually. We were told, no, we can't get it. Don't spend right now.
Not from us?
It was from here in the office.
Joe, this, this money just situation just come up.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's, we got told basically, don't do this and don't do that anymore, and I don't underst, I don't, with this whole, whole thing with him, I've been upset about it because of the way he did it. What I meant, I agree with, I should say, let me rephrase that, was micromanaging, when one person, one board member can come in and talk to us and talk to anybody the way they want to and give orders and this and that, that's not right. It has to be you as a whole board. Not one or the other. That's what got him, got to him.
We really are trying to help you, and we even came here and asked you about budgets and what you need.
Right.
And how much you needed, so we give you the money to fix properly whatever the problem was.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. With this reason with him, I don't understand some of it, but I do agree with some of it. I mean, in.
Well, everyone seems to be taking, wanting to push blame off on anyone else other than accepting that they might be part of the problem.
So, well, this is what he wrote. I didn't do it. I had nothing to do with it. And I'm still here. I mean, on the very first page in, in the second paragraph, actually, is a big, big thing right there. And yes, he was getting promised and getting promised that he would get sent to class to get his OQ'd for gas and everything else, and every time the question arose, when am I going to go? When are you going to start sending me? Is, we'll work at it.
The supervisor gave them the report each month. I didn't know anything about that.
It just happened yesterday.
So as far as him getting sent for certification?
Oh, yeah.
We have, we.
Well, he's supposed to wind over his stuff, so we're supposed to help.
I had another boss above me that gave me the okay, or no. Without getting the information and actually coming to you guys, when something happens like that, and it needs to be, yeah, let's go ahead and do this, like I gave to you in my report, I'll be on there the thirteenth through the fifteenth. That was already set, that was already taken care of before the new board members came in. That was already planned. Whether I'm going to go now or not, I don't know. That's going to be up to you guys, and if we can. But as far as the gas OQ'd with Kenneth, he was getting promised, he was getting promised and getting promised, and.
Where did the promises come from?
My advisor, or my supervisor. Tyra. She wanted to send him to get him OQ'd.
I know we tried giving you more authority, and you went over your budget. But what you asked to do was come to us with a plan.
Right, and I went over my budget, but Bern, I got text messages saying, go for it, go for it, I won't chew you up for it. So you want to get going on that? On the pickup? Come on, I've been hearing about this stuff. You're hollering at me because I went over budget on that? Yes, I did. I didn't see that fire speed, I'm sorry. So what over-budget have I been going on?
You haven't, I haven't complained about this truck. The only complaint I've made about that truck is you use this for a daily driver. What about whoever it is? Because you're sitting here and trying to call me a liar.
What budget have I gone over? What budget have I gone over? Because for one, I didn't know I had a budget.
I didn't say you went over. Did I?
Yeah, you just did.
You went over on the truck, but you brought that up.
Yes, I did bring that up. And I said it was an honest mistake, and I brought it up that night when we purchased it and told you guys. So what have I gone over?
Both were in conversations with you on that.
Yes.
Where, where did you hear that I said anything bad about it?
Everybody, everybody around town.
I think what the concern is, is the, the costs associated with driving that truck. It should be something that's maybe driven only as necessity warrants it.
Which I told him that we should go to his junkyard, get rid of as much as we can, and try to find a Ford Ranger. And we talked.
Oh, I agree with you on that, yes.
What you're talking about the truck, the only thing I said on that was it can't be a daily driver. It's too expensive to operate a three-quarter ton truck to pick up trash.
So we're going to run everything else with, that we have, run our tools, pick up the trash, stinky, wet, juicy stuff dripping inside the cab. That is our daily drive, that's why we got it. It needs, yes, I mean, that's why we got it to be used, right? You want me to park it? I'll park it. I'll park it. I won't drive it.
Back to the major supervisor thing, because.
We got it to be used.
We, for, for the reason was, we got it because of the plow on the front of it.
And the white, we got it because the white truck is, is, it's going to die. You can go in there right now and look how big of a puddle it's been sitting underneath there.
Where is it leaking at?
Everywhere, the main seal, around the oil pan, it's leaking everywhere.
There's not much difference in driving that white truck versus driving that black truck.
You're going to be putting too much money into repairing it. A rear main seal will cost you, you have to drop the transmission out, pull the rear main seal, it's a tiny seal that's in between the engine block and the transmission. And that'll be way too much money to repair that truck. You're looking easily pulling a transmission fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars.
And we were talking about getting that together so he could sell the junk and get a decent smaller truck.
And right now it's.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the cost would be to repair that truck.
The truck, the white truck is, is crap. Everybody knows that.
Well, there's times it's going to have to be used. You know, it's got to be logical, but you wouldn't use it just as a daily driver. That's the only thing I said.
But if there's nothing else, aren't you supposed to drive the daily drive?
That, that white truck, like I said, driving it versus driving that new truck, there's not much of a cost. They're both three-quarter tons. That white truck's just as bad on a few lines of road. SUV. It's just, if you were just scrapped out with, and a couple others.
SUV? You want me to pick up trash in that?
The part that you're missing is our conversation was selling the junk and getting the smaller truck.
Yes, yes, it was.
So what does that do for today? That's just, that's what I'm hearing. It's not solving today.
I'm, I'm willing to volunteer my time to help Joe find a truck somewhere, or something smaller, somewhere that can pull, like a utility, a small utility trailer you guys have, or something. If you guys have a small one, I don't know if you guys have. I can volunteer my time to help him find something that's.
I think even just having to run and pick up cars, you got to run to Trinidad or Wausau.
When this truck first came up, I was wondering, I'd go counsel with somebody, why are we getting such a big truck? We need a half ton around here. This is now, we're coming up with that, we're going back now.
Yeah, we're going back now. Yeah, we're going back now. Before it was, yes, we need to get a work truck. We need to get a good one. We need to get a heavy duty one. And that's what I got. And now it's coming back to why are we driving this? Why do we even have this truck then?
We gotta use it, that's it.
It's my conversation.
I'm not. You're asking, why am I driving it every day? I need the truck to pick up trash and stuff. This white one is not dependable. It doesn't start half the time. The battery's dead. I don't know if it's the alternator or what. It's leaking from everywhere. And you want me to use an SUV to put all that trash in where it leaks all this stuff and everything?
I don't think, I don't think we're suggesting that. I'm just thinking, he's saying like if you need to run and get, you know, run errands, run to Walsenburg, run to Trinidad, you know, um, you know, something that's just a little bit more fuel efficient, that, you know, you're not putting that wear and tear on that new truck. I mean, obviously you use the truck for what you need it for. No, it doesn't make sense to be putting leaking trash, you know, into the back of an SUV. Um, but you know, if you need to run, you know, to.
Okay.
You know, get supplies and stuff and if you get that vehicle while trading in some of the older, you know, junk vehicles. Getting that more fuel efficient, cost effective vehicle, I think is the point that we're trying.
And I never totally parked the thing until that happens. That was planned from the start. For you to get a truck that size, which is get rid of some of the junk that we kept setting up here.
Yes, it was.
And then get the truck. So that's what I had said.
I mean, I'd like to get rid of a lot of this stuff that we have around here because it's old and busted down.
Same conversation.
And it sounds like we're on the same page. Let's move on.
Now, how about the grader? Where are we at at that?
You know what? I'll tell you what. If you want that grader up and running, the road's blade, find somebody else to do it then because the pumps are weak on there. As you're going, you can't lift up when you need to. You have valves in the ground. You have manhole covers. It leaks bad. We went through it that day with Carl and we had to put how many gallons of hydraulic fluid in? Seven. Seven gallons of hydraulic fluid in because it leaks it out after you stop. How much transmission fluid? Five gallons of transmission fluid. Two gallons of oil.
Are you mad at all with such a guy yelling? Or is it just me and him?
I yell. Well, we're not buying a new one, so.
I didn't ask to buy a new one. I haven't asked for a machine at all. I know. I haven't asked for a machine at all. Have you guys asked me? Heard me ask for a machine?
Now, how can the other, uh, workers use it? I know they only use it up here by the ballpark, but they use it.
They use it by the ballpark and there are no valves and stuff there to lift up.
I, I, I use that blade all over town. This side, that side, all over the place. One, I'm used to running old junk. Just something I've gotten used to over here.
Thank you.
Oh, I still do it, you know? It's just a trick and art of whatever the hell you wanna call it.
Yeah, anyways.
But it leaks like a sin. It leaks like a sin. It leaks. Now, I don't know. It needs a few seals.
And the pumps are weak.
Pumps.
It's a collector. It's worth money.
I still like it. It's still a good grader. It is, it's just.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? So you guys set up, because I'm kinda confused right now. Partly because of Kenneth leaving and just the little bit I've heard. So were these committees set up to help? Or, or were they set up to micromanage? What are, what are we doing? What's the process?
Uh, yeah, I tell you what. I was just told last week they had a committee. I didn't even know they had one.
No, they just, they just chose one.
Yeah, we just, we just warned them. We just warned them. So the, the purpose, as I understand it, is that all six of us kinda chose a committee to be on and then we will hold workshops that we like to include citizens in the town and to get feedback on the committees, the respective committees. So there's the projects committee, the finance committee, and then what was the other one?
Maintenance.
The maintenance committee. And then that's where they'll, then we'll turn around and try to, you know, engage our citizens in our town to get ideas, um, beyond like what we're doing tonight. You know, at, at regular meetings that we can go into further depth. So we talked about scheduling these committees and, well, the committee, we're doing work in the background on the committees, but the actual workshops, we're talking about doing, um, second, second Thursday of every month or second Tuesday, what'd you say?
Thursdays.
Second Thursday of every month. So anybody that wanted to, is it anybody that wants to show up from town can show up and sit with that, if their committee, if they have a concern.
Do you have to be in town town? Because sometimes they make those distinctions even though it's all the same. As long as we have an Aguilar address, we're good to volunteer. As tons and tons of people in the foothills that want to help that have Aguilar addresses.
Right. So the question, the rest of it is, I know it's not your style to micromanage, okay, or something, okay. But are you coming across like you're micromanaging or bossing around? Is that where?
When that, before I got on, on council, I talked to him as a concerned citizen.
Okay.
It seems like it turns things around. You know, he, uh, micromanaging and all this, you know, but you can't, you know, you give him advice, this and that, not that he has to do it. But like him, I don't know. I talked to him a few times, this and that, and this, but.
I, I understand now. I just, I was getting a little.
Like, uh, uh, that Kenneth, I don't know.
You put it from the start with them. When you told him and Jesse, you didn't want them working because they weren't from Aguilar.
Who?
Him and Jesse Pacheco. When we hired those two on, you told them boys that you didn't want them working there because they weren't from Aguilar. Yes, you did.
We got some good people.
No, you didn't. You said you didn't want them working there. And you said that was gonna change when you got on the board. I heard you.
He cannot do it last because of being, there ain't nothing near for him. He's a young man. That other guy.
That's not for you to determine.
Exactly.
That's not for you to determine whether someone is.
And the way you come out and start talking to any of us, that's not right.
I wasn't on council either. Was I on council?
No, the two times you weren't and the one time after.
I wasn't on council.
And you know, the way you've been coming out and talking to any of us, even the ladies in the office, that's not right of you, Frank. I'm gonna tell you that right now. Vern, I owe you an apology because you're right. I wasn't meaning this towards you. I wasn't meaning you were trying to micromanage. You have been trying to be helpful. So I will go on the record and I will apologize and state that clearly. And I am sorry for that because you have been trying to be helpful with us. I do appreciate that. Gerald, you have been big time. Thank you. Monica, thank you. Ms. Adams, just last couple of days and stuff, thank you. Mr. Romero, thank you very much. This is the one that's been having the problem right here.
Have, have I seen you in the last month?
No, you haven't because you've stayed away. But any other time you keep coming up or you catch one of the guys or Kenneth that was out there or the other guy.
Where, dude, I can't see other guys.
I don't know. He comes in and he told me.
When have I seen them?
And I gotta believe my employee.
Can we turn this around, stop the argument and figure out how to work it to where you don't have to fight?
Amen.
What, what do you need done?
There's a lot that's gotta be done. I mean, we got this coming week. I have been.
The work in the park and all that?
The work in the park, plus there's, there's meter reads that's gotta be done. I mean. Yes, and I do appreciate that and I will get with you.
Pulling all the weeds just so you know, all the.
And, you know what?
Doing all that.
Why should we look at that all late with you?
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, we already did. There was Mr. Brahus. Carl Saka was there too. But like I said, we put seven gallons of hydraulic in, five gallons of transmission and two gallons of oil. And we're gonna have to put it back in again.
We think we need to move on. We know that truck is not viable anymore. We need to scrap it for parts or do whatever we need to do and, and move on. I think if there's any, along, and maybe that's part of what the committee and the workshop can talk about ways to figure out, do you gather that inventory list of stuff that we can try to sell? Generate some money for the town. Obviously, the town needs money big time, so maybe that can be part of the workshop.
Not only did we identify problems, we found solutions to them at the same time.
What about the little big trucks?
That's what.
Dude, that would, that would be so nice right now because we could, like a, like a UTV or something?
They got the little Toyota trucks. They got the cab on the front with the little metal.
That would be awesome. You know, pick up trash stuff. That'd be awesome. Anyways, uh, we would have to do like an auction if we're gonna sell this stuff. We can't just sell it. So I guess I can start getting stuff ready.
Yeah, you know, get an inventory list together of what you know can go on auction and relent it at the, at the workshop.
Um.
Just one thing. That the white truck, just for, so we know. Take it out to years and have them give you an estimate.
Yes, sir.
What it would cost. You auction that thing out to your own, get nothing for it.
Right.
But, and if it's too much money, you don't have to do it. And, but I would like to know whatever it costs to stop the oil leaks.
Yes, sir. Okay.
I'm willing to bet on it too, against years. The way it would cost to fix it.
Choosing them.
You mentioned something about two thousand dollars.
That's, that was like a, but, but that's like a rough estimate. Like I can give you an actual breakdown of it, Gerald.
Okay, I will, when you can make it, let me know when you can come up. I'll let you look at it or I'll take it down to you and then I'll still take it to gears and and get it done. So, um, as far as like the issue yesterday, uh, with the Department of Water Resources, uh, with that Lisa Petrangelo, it's been taken care of. So we're good there. It been uploaded today. We're not gonna be in violation. No, fine. It's been taken care of. Um, we have to mark down the Tree Hill Creek well as completely not active. Um, I don't know for the reason if it was groundwater under the influence of surface water or why it was completely shut down, but they came down, the Division of Water Resources came down and I took them to all the wells and the galleys. Um, to make sure everything was copacetic, what routes we were using was still online and what we weren't, were offline. So the two galleys and the Tree Hill Creek well have to be completely offline right now. Um, the galleys, we can't even hook up because they are surface water. We don't have the right filtration system for that. Uh, the Tree Hill Creek, if we wanna get that up and running, I have to do more tests, but chances are it's probably still gonna show up. Surface water under the, or groundwater under the influence of surface. The Berry West well, we were told it was shut down because it caved in. From what I understood, that one's the one that caved in or the caesars cracked or something.
At some point, the discussion was it needed to be redrilled.
Redrilled.
Right?
Right, yes, sir. So they had issued a, uh, almost the same thing like to do with the Tree Hill Creek, uh, inactive issue on it. With that one, if we wanna get it up and running, then a little bit of paperwork's gonna have to be done, but they're not gonna completely take it from us, basically.
Now you're talking about the Berry West.
The Berry West. So we, we don't have to do it now or anytime soon or anything. But with me filling that paper out, which she, I should've got to you guys and she emailed it, uh, I'll print it out. Right now, it's considered inactive. That with the Tree Hill and the galleys. So we can't use them whatsoever. Um, Marisha was supposed to be up and running this week. Um, Andrea's had, uh, a few things come up. One of their trucks went down, their pump truck went down, so they couldn't get out too much. I know we definitely have to get that going because we are spending a lot of money hauling water up to Magoons just for one house in Trinidad.
Did your storage is good?
Storage is good. Everything's good. Uh, the tanks, I've found out the hard way, I can't do a yearly or a six month tank inspection. I have to do a monthly tank inspection. States requiring a monthly tank inspection. So gotta start doing that now as well with a bunch of other stuff. Lead and copper is finally complying. I have three tests that has to be done. I'm trying to find out if it's three per well or if I could do, just run the three tests for the three crump wells. They haven't gotten back, Lisa hasn't gotten back to me yet to let me know if that's what needs to be done, but it needs to be the fluoride, nitrate and the inorganics. And they get costly. They get costly. So I'm hoping we can run just a set of three for all three wells and not individuals. Um, and again, our chlorination machine went down. Um, I did get one ordered because we have to have it. That's something that is a must. But in the meantime, I did find a neighboring town, Walsenburg, to lend us one till the sun comes in because they're about three weeks out. They're back ordered. So we do have it. It's working good.
Thank you for the courtesy call on that, by the way. I just, I don't get my phone calls very much, even if I don't check my messages, but I do appreciate.
Well, I was gonna go to Denver and get it that day because that one company had it, but they don't have us as an account, so we had to pay for it upfront. So then that's when I stopped and then I did call around and Walsenburg did, did say, yes, I've got one you guys can use. So, um, we need to get those big, we need to get those big pumps going up at the sewer leakings, those big aerators. I mean, we need the electric fixed down there. They're gonna start their checking coming around and it's gonna exempt us from a lot of stuff because we are evaporation. We're not like a lot of these other cities and they have to do certain tests. Monthly, quarterly. As long as we stay evaporation, we're all right. And we are exempt from a lot of this stuff, but I've had Dominic from Seed Colorado Roll Water as well as Gray Colter. And some of the laws are starting to change and we're gonna have to start doing stuff. Those big aerators play a big part on keeping everything moving and clearing it out and just keeping it fresh, basically, so that way the evaporation still keeps going. Um, there's no power to it. If there is power, then I do believe somebody said it one time right before I started that it was too much or something was wrong. I don't know if it's San Isabel's deal that we have to look at or if we have to get somebody down there. That's not something that has to be done next month. I mean, we got time on it, but it's.
Okay, so the evaporation of the sewer leakings, I guess, where are those? I, I, I don't even.
They're down Counter Road, I think. Fifty-six four, fifty-six five, down towards the end. Um, we have three different ponds and like I said, we're set up for evaporation, which is good. We don't wanna change. That's one thing that we've been stressed out with everything that's coming. Don't change the evaporation. Keep the three ponds at evaporation. Um, but anyways, we got three big motor, two big motors in there. That when you do turn them on, they throw so much air through there and stuff and it helps kinda break everything up and they've been down for quite a while, Derek. I don't know how long, for a while, uh.
Oh, one? Oh, two, Mark was in charge back then.
Yeah.
And it was part of this Evergreen deal was supposed to come down there, rebuild them. They run on big DC motors. They can bring AC to DC off three phase. And they were green.
And how, I'm sorry, oh, what are you talking?
Two thousand one.
Two thousand one?
Yeah. I mean, the last time I worked here, I think is when we used them. That was two thousand, two thousand one.
So that's my question. I mean, i- is the technology evolved? That where it can be solar or, you know?
No, we can actually, if we have enough of the power going into, we can do solar there. Yes, ma'am.
So, and so you're saying this doesn't have to be done immediately, but it's on the punch list of stuff.
Yes.
Hey, I would, you kinda know what's going on and start pricing it out. You know, again, we need budgets, just as discussed.
Okay.
We need budgets. So start pricing out. Um, you know, what, what we can do is, there's not much we can do at the moment.
Right, no, and that's why I said it doesn't need to be.
Let's start planning, you know, getting some plans in place.
Because we've got the, the solar be down there and that helps a little bit, but it's not a big deal and it just basically knocks the odor down is what that does.
Right.
So, um, oh, there we go, Mr. Vern. I took your idea again. Truck needed tires. Well, I found a set of tires over there and I, I used them. They were brand new sitting there. So I used them. It didn't cost us anything but the mounting. Well, I found a set of tires over there and I, I used them. They were brand new sitting there, so I used them. It didn't cost us anything but the mountain imbalance. So there I saved on that. Um, guess that's pretty much it. Oh, uh, there again, I don't know with the committees or who we need to talk to, but we've had a couple of shut offs for non-payment. And again, they're using their water and stuff. And this is different people, not the one that we've been fighting with. I went and shut them off, and we haven't seen it for two weeks now. And they're running water and doing good. And the last time I stepped foot on that place, I got threatened with shotgun.
Okay, I'm confused. We shut them off, but they're still running water?
They turned it on themselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's meter locks.
There's meter locks, but when I can't fit in there?
I feel you.
Or it's too deep and that's all I'm doing is dangling.
Well, not that thing they put on the house on, on grinds. They put that metal cage thing over the water?
Oh, I have the Derek modified.
But yeah, there's been a couple that's been turned off, and they turned them on themselves and still haven't come in to pay.
It is.
And they didn't pay.
And I do check to make sure. Did they pay? Did they pay? And no. And they're still using it, and when I went over there, it was, I hope you can outrun a tall cage.
Okay, can you provide us those names after the meeting of who has done that?
Yep.
I think, oh, how, how is the shut off? Is it to where you could put a lock on it?
Yes.
Do we have any locks?
Yes, but again, pit's about that wide, Gerald. Some of them are deep and I can't fit in them. And if I, like Kenneth, then he's headfirst and his feet are dangling. He's got that much sticking out. Some of them are deep and.
And this kind of comes all back to code enforcement and law enforcement, having law enforcement in town, which we have to table tonight. Um, we have law enforcement here. I mean, if, if we had to call Wausau's County, does it over there with the deputy? Did you get in there?
I can get in there with the deputy, it's basically the civil standby. I don't know if I'll have to.
Isn't that against the law to trespass if it's on the inside of the yard?
It's not, well, it's not technically inside the yard, but it is on their property.
There's easements for that. Anytime you have a public utility, the main workers that can drill, they have easements to get into the water and electricity and gas.
Is there, just as a quick question, is there a way, and I don't know how each person is, but I know how some in the past have been, is there maybe someone that can mediate? Say, hey, you know, what can we do to find out, are these people just being bums and not paying their bill, and they need to have their stuff shut off? Or is there something else going on? Like, we have had some people that said, you know what, I'm not paying for the water anymore, and, you know, like, like, like what we've had with Robert. But i- is, is there some way we can mediate that?
Yeah, I agree. I agree because our water is, is terrible here, you know, and it, it makes me angry that I have to go to Trinidad every month and buy water because I can't drink the water here. So, um, I agree with that, that maybe that's something in the committees and the workshops again that we can.
Because you do need to discuss when people aren't paying, but is there something else going on with any of them?
I agree, I agree.
This one in particular, there's a lot going on. It's.
Yeah, could you, if not tonight, then the next day or two, give us that information? Take a look at it, further discuss it.
Yes, ma'am.
We need to keep, it's getting late. We need to keep pushing forward.
I do have one more thing, though, if you guys don't mind. Um, I do think we need to address and change our policy for new taps, period.
I agree. Uh, we need to be charging for a lot of things, I think.
I do, I do have one from the city of Walsenburgh here, just for the gas. Like they charge seven ninety-eight customer charge every month that they do, a delivery charge, a gas supply charge, and that's a monthly deal that they get on their bill. I'm not asking to do that. I'm not asking to do that. What I'm asking to do is anytime we get a tap, a new tap, anybody, whether it's water, sewer, or gas. Trinidad, Walsenburgh, Pueblo, Beulah, West Cliff, the customers pay for their taps, and their prices are right with us. They're not much of a difference. Some are a little higher, some are a little lower. But they make the customer do all their own excavation. All of it. And the supply. We do the actual taps, the hookups. The customer does the rest. That would save a lot to the town.
Don't you charge three thousand for each?
Three thousand for each tap, but like I said, you can call Trinidad, Walsenburgh, you can, you can freely call any of them.
So you don't charge extra for excavate when there's excavation required and stuff?
Yeah, we're just seventy-five hundred dollars for it now.
As far as I know, we just do it. Supply everything.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a revenue.
And if they want us to do it, then I'm suggesting like fifty dollars an hour for the backhoe, twenty-five dollars an hour for the operator, twenty-five dollars an hour for every guy on the ground for however long it takes, plus material. So if we have to pay like seven dollars a foot to get a hundred foot of material and it's seven hundred dollars for that, then we charge thirteen dollars or fourteen dollars.
Would that cover MGM's bill?
Yeah, it would cover a lot of it. But I'm suggesting from this point forward that we actually have the landowners do it. Now, we've got some that are still needing to be done that we need to do.
That we need to do, because.
Because it's already been, yes. It's already been agreed to.
Can we make a motion? Can we file a motion right now to start charging or?
I don't know how you guys want it, or how they can do that.
I think there's like resolutions and ordinances on that. So I think you would have to do something like that to change what they charge.
But I mean, it would actually be charging, and then, or, and/or they get their own to do it. And where that, the taps come in, because they're paying for the taps, we actually do the taps, not the contractor or anybody else. The town of Aguilar does.
They could amend a resolution.
Contractor would do it all. Because they, they would cover any and all expense too, from materials, everything. See, Trinidad, they dig through that brick through there, and any of that brick's damaged, the owner's gotta pay for it to all get back, everything. That's their owner's expense.
So the town would have to approve for the dig to be happening with the contractor, right?
Yep, and basically, they would have to be a licensed contractor. So now the existing problems like yours, for instance, no, that's not on you. That's something that's already been done through the town in the years past. It just needs to be fixed now. And again, the excess two, two taps that we have going on now, that's already been approved. We need to finish that and be done. But everything moving forward with new owners, new taps, need to be on them.
I agree. I agree. That there's no reason why we should be absorbing those costs.
And like I said, and if they cut through the blacktop or cement, that's on them to get it back.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
On your report here, I've, well, just one on this and one other question.
Okay.
On your water license, you need to be in Durango for three days to get your classes or a water license?
No, sir. Um, if I didn't specify in there, I'm sorry, what I meant was that one is for the wastewater. They are given on that Tuesday, wait, Wednesday. No, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. On that Tuesday, it is given the water classes for the valves, uh, high pressure, low pressure, because we've been, I've been finding that around town. There's been people calling saying their water's been fuzzy and air and while it has to deal with the high pressure and the low pressure on valves and, and the lines and stuff. So I wanna take that one on Tuesday because it's strictly the water, and it just, it helps me. I mean, I've got my water license. I don't need to go get another one right now, but it just helps with my education. And then the Wednesday and the Thursday is all wastewater, and they give, I will actually have a printout for you and what they give, and I can actually, I think I can either take it that day, that Thursday, or within the following three weeks and have it.
Let's see, and then you're asking for, you said, you're saying here that you were promised three dollar an hour raise?
One dollar when I got out of probation, and then two dollars, two additional when I got my water license.
Who promised that?
Tyra.
You know the more improved stuff like that.
I know. That's why I hadn't asked him this whole entire time, and then I figured now with, I just did. I figured now with me being back to myself.
Yeah, yes.
But that's why I said, please take it into consideration. I didn't say it had to be done, or had to be done tonight or anything.
Yeah, and I, I'm giving a lot of credit for that you're the only one right now. Uh, last question for me. On your, whenever you got paid for those eight, seven, ten, twenty-four, did you turn in a hundred and forty hours?
Seven, ten.
For a two-week period?
Um, for this one, seven, ten, twenty-four. Hundred and, I don't know, was it a hundred and forty hours, stuff? Okay, yeah, it was all the driving back and stuff from Minnesota. That wasn't.
Like on the max, or on the thing fifteen hours?
On the thing fifteen hours, so let's see. I flew out on Sunday, okay? I didn't get to the motel till six o'clock that night. Time stopped. I got up, left in the Uber, went to, got the truck, got the truck, couldn't fill up. I had to sit around and wait. No money on the card to fill up. I didn't get a chance to leave till after two o'clock that afternoon. Then I drove. I drove quite a ways. I drove as much as I can. I drove till about ten o'clock at night. And then I got back up at four and drove home, and I got home about five, six o'clock. Roads were shut down. I had to go detours. So yeah, that's.
Fifteen-hour drive and then?
And turned into almost thirty. I mean, if this is gonna be a problem and stuff, let me know. I'll walk away right now. I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to start anything, guys. I'm just. You are. I'm just saying, it's, I don't think I got it. I don't. I don't think I have you. I'm just saying. You know, if this was gonna be a problem to start with, this was gonna be a problem to start with, then I should've been told, no, let's stick something around here. Let's do this, let's do that. Because I did ask everybody for guidance.
I asked how come there's a hundred and forty hours? That was all.
And it was driving. A lot of it was driving, and then getting back, mosquitoes spraying, working weekends.
I wouldn't pay.
I mean, when, especially the weekends and stuff.
Right, I mean, because that would help not only the employees to be able to show the time they're coming in and out, but also to have a record of when they're here and, you know, because we had to do the same thing and turn in any driving mileage, anything like that, but.
But I mean, like now, though, I mean, I'm not getting the hours. That was at one time. Not getting the hours. I'm not getting a hundred and twenty. I'm not getting a hundred.
I used to drive, and I know that I didn't get, I used to travel time, and I was wondering how you came up with a hundred and forty hours? That was the question.
So, so you, so I did all this for three days and, and no travel time, no driving, is what, is what you're saying? I shouldn't have marked downtime?
The thing was, I came up with a hundred and forty hours.
Because seventy-two hours is three days. I think that's why he was trying to figure out why the, where the numbers were at. And it's not because of you. It's because we, there's been so many problems with finances, and that's why everybody's kind of.
I started my time when I left. I didn't start it when I got up and got ready. I didn't start it when I was sleeping or eating or any of that stuff. It was basically all driving and waiting around.
Derek?
Like, I just wanted to point out, remember all them years of us complaining, you know, the CML classes we couldn't, or the water classes, where you'll get kicked out of his room because there wasn't money on the cards and all this other stuff?
Uh-uh, I don't remember that.
I understand where you're coming from. I got you. It's,
Yeah.
It's stuff that we dealt with for twelve years. Bullshit, there's money and then there's no money, and then there's this and that. I feel you, man. Just wanted to throw that out.
Vern, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to argue with you either. I'm sorry.
I just asked how many hours that was.
And like I said, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to argue with you either. Just, I'm tired. Like I said, I had to help, but he's not here on the weekends. He quit yesterday. He wasn't here the week before, so it's been me. It's been me for the last month and a half. Any more questions?
Thank you. I'm just reporting.